I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 9, 2019, meeting of the South Borough School Committee. First order business is audience sharing. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I do. I can share now, or I can share later. Or I could share a little now and share a little later. We did have an outstanding visit from the Office of District Review and Monitoring. I know several school committee members participated. It was opened up as an option for all of our different stakeholders in the community, and I think each session was well-attended. We did say to them it was wonderful to have them here for three full days, but we would be amiss if we did not also share. It was nice to see you go. Because while it was well-scheduled by Greg and supported by Nancy Bissett and Cheryl Lepri, it was an intensive period of time. All of our administrators participated in one form or another, whether it was classroom and school visits, or whether it was actually participating in a focus group. They did leave today with a few parting comments, but also shared with us before the process began that they would not leave with any specific information shared with us, that rather the process is they will spend the weekend together. If three days of intensive work wasn't enough, they'll be spending the weekend together and just reviewing some of their notations. They would put a report together. The lead coordinator, Mr. Hearn, would be reviewing that and editing that. And with a smile, they then said, "It's off to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it should be a report presented to us in three, two, two to three to four months, once it is reviewed by the Department of Ed." It was a great experience, and again, we were excited to have been randomly selected this year because it also is perfect timing, given that we will have a transition in superintendent soon, and it's a, be a good guiding document for, oh, Greg, our new superintendent-to-be, as well as all of the stakeholders in preparing the next strategic plan, which will be 2021 and forward. So, they wanted to extend a special thanks for everyone who showed such support of their work, such a warm, welcoming district, and as again, they did not share anything specific at this point, but, you know, I think they gained the appreciation for what ten schools, three districts, and one community of learners on the positive side, and the somewhat frantic, frenetic schedule when they're trying to get all, to all of the schools. So, it was a former reauthorization of the old Program Quality Assurance Review, PQA, and the difference in this case is they really did point out was that they're here to be supportive and provide resources as we move forward. They're not here to provide any type of checkbox corrective action. So, I know everyone here, Becky, Greg, Jim, Erica, and all of our administrative team were part of that process as well, as well as the new school committee. So, we look forward to the report.
Okay. So, because this is audience sharing, can I ask a question?
It's up to the chair.
You make an exception?
Yeah.
I'm just sort of curious, so the report will be coming in two, three, four months. I suppose it's a bit, I guess, but I'm not familiar with this. Is there a reason that it takes that long?
I can feel that. We asked that, and it's because Desi has exactly one editor doing all of these, and they have to be very detailed footnoted. He said everyone has like thirty-five footnotes, and the editor has to check every footnote.
So, yeah, so they get done with their, so they complete their conclusions, it just takes that?
Yeah, they only take a few days to do that.
Put into a presentation.
And I think that they said there was somewhere between twenty and thirty reviews this year. I actually had some communications with some of the superintendents who had experienced the review in the fall, and a few of them were still waiting for the report. But it's not from this team, it's really, yeah, the Department of Ed process, so.
Okay. Anything else? Actually, I was reminded that we should, since our last meeting, we've appointed Greg Martino as our next superintendent, so congratulations, Greg.
Yay.
So, he can work out the contract details.
Next Wednesday.
Exactly.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder on that one while we're announcing.
Thanks for the little reminder.
Okay.
All right, moving on to new business then. First item is the American Speech Language Hearing Association Conference Presentation.
I'm actually going to turn this over to Kathleen Valde, if that's okay?
Thank you. We have Cheryl Miller, our outstanding speech and language pathologist at NEARI, here to talk about her presentation at the most recent ASHA, want to sit with me, Cheryl? Conference held in Boston.
Cheryl, can you do that? Can I stand for a little bit? Would that be okay? All right. Hannah, I'll sit here. Please keep down.
Thank you, everybody, for letting me come and present tonight. My name is Cheryl Miller, I'm the speech pathologist at the NEARI School, and I came to talk to you about a program that is six years old. And it started, its original name was Music Enrichment, because that was the best title we had for it. And then we built in more enrichment programs in our academic schedule, and there became a separate music enrichment, so we had to come up with a different name. So, I was joking around with my son, and he said, "Mom, why don't you call it Lee and Cheryl's Fun Time Music Bonanza?" And I, you know, chuckled about that, and then, you know, emailed everybody, and their response was, "Oh, my gosh, Music Bonanza, I love it." So, it has been Music Bonanza now for the last several years. But just to tell you a little bit about this, you guys know about our school, our program, so we started this in the fall of 2012, and this came about after a discussion I had with Lee's big niece, our music teacher. And we had gotten three students who were in a sub-separate program, and she said, "You know, Cheryl, they're so musical, I want to incorporate them into our music program, but, you know, some of the concepts are really challenging for them. What do you think, you know, you're seeing them for language, what do you think we could do about that?" And we talked and talked some more, and then we kind of came up with this idea that we would do a language-based music program. And as part of that language-based music program, we would do reverse inclusion. So, we have students who are part of our peer pals program. So, these are students who volunteer to come and participate in social groups, in music, in various different interactions, sitting with folks at lunch, and these are students who I use to bring to Music Bonanza. And so, it's really focused on a reverse inclusion model. The kids who are part of this program are teaching other students what they've learned, or they're partnering together, they're focusing on IEP goals, such as language goals, motor goals. We've even had our APE people, our OTs and PTs come and give us suggestions about some of the activities that we're doing. Is this a good activity? Should we change this? What is something we can work on? So, what we're really trying to do in this once-a-week program is not only is it about music, but it's about language, it's about movement, it's about being a friend, it's partnering, it's cooperation, there's a lot of good things that happen. The presentation that you're seeing tonight is the presentation that Lee and I did in, I believe, March of 2017. We went to Boston and presented to the Massachusetts Music Educators Association during their national, or their Boston convention, not national, local. And we went and presented to music teachers, and it was really, I didn't know what to expect, I'm not a music teacher, and we had a fairly good-sized room, and it was standing room only. There were people sitting on the floor, there were people lining the walls, there weren't enough seats, and it was really overwhelming, but yet very cool, because I think this is an idea that many music teachers are thinking about and want to do. So, I'm using this, and some of the principals who are here are going to recognize some of these friends. So, anyway, we are, so we noticed early on that we needed to change some things. What you're seeing on the board there are, we ask WH questions at the end of our music program. So, who shared music today? What was your favorite? What was the best thing? Who did you dance with? So, we're asking WH questions, and we're using a very heavy visual schedule and visuals so that the kids can rely on that and make selections. So, we do, I, I, the days that I wear my Fitbit on this class day, woo, I nail ten thousand steps by the end of the day, it's a great, Wednesdays are always a great day because I get my ten thousand steps, for sure. We're doing finger plays, we've done a lot of sign language. I come from Ohio, and I went to school in Akron, and it has a very large deaf population, and so I learned signing very early in my career. My teacher was the only hearing of a deaf family. And it's been great because we've been able to incorporate a lot of sign language as well, and you'll see some of that in just a few moments. I won't spend too much time on this, I've already told you, we're doing IEP goals, we're trying to be collaborative with all of the people who are providing support services. We do a lot of repetition, because we find with repetition, there's a lot of skill-building, and there's comfort. And then what we see with a lot of repetition is transfer and generalization. We see these kids taking those skills and taking them outside and interacting with peers and engaging peers. So, we really feel that the repetition is essential. When we first started it, we're like, every week, "Oh, what's a new activity? Let's change." And then we went, mm, that doesn't work. So, we do a lot of repetition, and we try and offer choices whenever we can, because with choice, there's a lot of opportunities. And one of the things that we love to do, which sometimes the peer pals are a little uncomfortable with, because they don't know what to expect, but the kids select a favorite piece of music. So, it could be something popular like, excuse me, it could be Taylor Swift, it could be Justin Timberlake, but it could also be a theme from a movie. It could be something from Sesame Street that, you know, a student has really enjoyed. Today, sharing was another song that we had done another time that they really liked. So, the choice is fun, and when we do that, we are all just dancing, and I don't, I think sometimes the reaction is, "Oh, my gosh, that teacher is dancing." But, that's okay, ten thousand steps. So, it's all good. So, I'm going to show you this. This student is no longer at the NEARI School, but he was really a big Pete the Cat fan, and part of his communication was with a communication device, touch chat, but he also has quite a lot of sign language, and so we did a Pete the Cat song in Music Bonanza. So, I'll just show this to you real quick. (Music) Oh, no. The last button popped up and went away. And how many buttons are left? One minus one equals zero. Did he cry? Buttons come and buttons go. He looked down at his bottleless shirt, and wondered if he saw. Baby buttons. And he kept on singing. So, you get a sense of what that was, and there was a lot of joy in that, and a lot of sharing that happened after that. He would sign and read the book to a peer, so when they were doing partner reading, he was able to sign and share his book with a peer, which was great. And then...
Good thing she knows what she's doing.
So, this is, I, I won't spend a lot of time on this, this is a lot of, we put this in for the music folks, so we do a lot of different things, we're very versatile. We don't force, we try and make this be as natural, we want the language to be natural, we want the process to be natural, we see some really incredible things happening. And what I loved today is I went to do inclusion in a classroom, and one of my students who has a device verbally said, "I want Baby Shark." And, and the whole class, and he did, he took, he went, "I want Baby Shark." And everybody went, "Yeah." And so, we ended inclusion with Baby Shark, which was great, but that's, there's a lot of requesting, there's a lot of choice, and this is why this is really a good thing. And then, we have some carryover and transfer of skills. I was working on a book with a student, this is a very short clip, it's kind of soft, he has a soft voice. So, we were doing the book and just doing some reading and comprehension questions, and because we had sung it once, he went right into singing.
Oh, too.
That's all right. And there's, I don't know that I need to show this, this is, well, play a little bit. Am I making it better for you?
No.
So, here's some other carryover and transfer of skills. This is the Russian dance.
You are musical.
And he initiated this. We were on the floor working, and he just started. we love to see. And then, we have wonderful ESPs who are very willing to come and let their hair down every single day when they come and see us. I don't know, what I, so we have reverse inclusion, which is what I told you, these are a couple of testimonials from kids saying why this, this whole reverse inclusion is so important, so we'll play one.
It's important to be a peer pal because I feel like it's, it's helping the kids that are in the program, it's helping them do well socially, and it's also fun because I get to help them, make them happy.
The other thing that we do is we invite family to be part of this, and so, we have had siblings come if they're at the school, at the same time, we've had siblings come and participate. We also, parents have an open invitation to come anytime they would like. We've already had one parent drop in this year, which has been wonderful. And then we have an end-of-the-year celebration in June, where we invite the families in, and the families get down on the floor and do the whole Music Bonanza with us. And I think that's it. So, I do, oh, there is this, so then, this past November, I wrote a, about a year ago, actually, I wrote a proposal to present at the National American Speech and Language Hearing Association, and my proposal was accepted. It was a poster session, and I didn't bring the poster because that's very static, this is much more interactive. And it was great, I had an hour and a half where I stood by my poster and waited for people to come, Erica was one of the wonderful people who came and saw me. And during that time, I had probably over fifty people come and talk to me about it, to the point where I ended up going about two hours. And it was really amazing, just people asking questions, "How do you do this?", you know, "How does administration feel about it? How are teachers feeling about it? How do the students feel about it?" People asked a lot of great, great questions. So, it was very, just wonderful to be part of my professional community and be able to share this with them and show the work that we've been able to do the last six years. You guys want to see my forehand is shaking? I'll show you a little bit. Oh, this is, the whole body is shaking now. Just starts with your hand, and then it's everywhere. So, thank you very much for your time this evening and for letting me come and talk a little bit about this program. We're, we're very grateful to our administration support, first with Linda Murdoch when we did this in 2012, and Kathleen has continued that support, and it's been wonderful to be able to continue to offer that and to include our peer pals as well. So, thank you again for your time.
That's great. Thank you. Maybe we should do audience sharing.
Well, thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay.
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
It just sounds like an amazing program, I mean, and really, it's wonderful to hear all of this, and good for everybody who's been involved in developing it, that's really, that's really wonderful, it sounds like it benefits everybody.
I have to admit, it's one of the high points of the week. You know, I, I love my students, I love my job, but I really, really love Music Bonanza. It's just, it's joy, it's just unbridled joy.
Can I just add to that? It's, and it takes a lot of work behind the scenes to put this together, and it's a, it's a real passion for Cheryl and Lee to bring this to our students, and it's a highlight for everybody in the school. I love dropping by, teachers love coming by, and parents are just thrilled to see this happening in our school, so thank you, Cheryl, the hard work doesn't go unnoticed.
All right, thank you. Next up is the Youth in Philanthropy presentation.
I like the chairs.
Unfortunately, we have a tough act to follow after Cheryl's presentation, so... If we start to flounder, that's going to be our go-to. Thank you for giving this, giving us this opportunity to present about this, with this program this year. I'll be honest, this is a new program, we're very excited about. Over the summer, I received a phone call from a former parent, Elaine Holmes, who asked for a meeting to talk about a wonderful opportunity to bring to Trotter, bring to Trotter. Sometimes I've taken these meetings, and parents have said, "I have a great idea, now you do the work." This was a different type of conversation. She had shared with me, a couple of her daughters were involved in this program at the high school level, and how transformative this, this program was. She talked about how youth in philanthropy gets young adults involved in, in the community, studying nonprofit organizations, make, doing research, and then making a decision about how to distribute grant money. And just to see Mrs. Holmes', you know, enthusiasm about the program really gave us, gave me a spark, and we just began to start a conversation over the summer. I met with Keith, you know, about a week later, and we are under the, you know, our philosophy is if we can offer as many robust opportunities for our students, we'll investigate that, and if we can cast a wide net, that would be great. And so, the conversations began, and sometime in August, I received a phone call from Joan, and she says, "You're not going to believe this, but I just applied to be the advisor for the Youth in Philanthropy program," and, "Which is going to be housed at Trotter Middle School." And so, we were very fortunate to have Joan come on board, and I want to allow Joan the opportunity to walk you through this wonderful opportunity for our eighth-grade students.
Thank you. So, I had seen the notice for the position, and my background prior to teaching was working with nonprofit organizations and grant administrations, so I thought, "Oh, this is just a great opportunity." Very surprised when I got into the interview and found out that it would be housed at Trotter. That was delighted with it. So, I, very short commute, yes, yes, a short commute. So, slide two, okay. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background and then kind of tell you where we are. So, the Youth in Philanthropy program was, is, has been created by the Foundation for Metro West. The Foundation for Metro West serves thirty-three cities and towns in the Metro West area, not including Boston, Boston's just up on the map there for reference. All of the grants that are awarded serve this region, and you can see the list on the side there. Next slide. So, this is an experiential learning program. It is designed to empower students to become philanthropists and community leaders. The goal is to help them learn about the grant-making process, including the types and functions of foundations, and how nonprofit organizations work. I think the most important part for me is it really helps students with the opportunity and the understanding of why it's important to give their time, their talent, and their treasure for the common good, and I, I think that, to me, is the most rewarding part. Next slide. So, the Youth in Philanthropy program began with the foundation in 1997. They had one group of fourteen students that were meeting in Natick. Now, there are sixteen programs across the Metro West region, both at the high school and the middle school level, and South Borough this year is one of the newest programs. So, we have thirteen students, we meet on Thursdays for an hour after school. It's a closely divided group, we have eight students from Fay and five students from Trotter, they're all eighth graders. Our Fay students live here in South Borough, but they come from a number of different communities. We have students as close by as Marlboro and Natick, get a little farther out, we've got a student from New Jersey, get a little farther out from that. We also have a student from Australia and one from South Korea. So, it's a, for the, our little group of thirteen, it's a really nice mix of backgrounds and experiences, so I think we're learning from each other as we go. And the funding source for our program is the South Borough Community Fund. Next slide. So, we have $10,000 with which to award grant funds, and the students will select two grants of $5,000 each. Now, the grants can fall under different categories, and our students work together to determine which categories and programs that they want to fund. So, what we're looking at right now with our group is we will be researching organizations that serve education, the environment, hunger relief, arts and culture, animal welfare, human services, and programs for the aging. Those are the categories that we've worked down to. Next slide. So, our curriculum includes learning about community needs assessment, and we've even talked about the Metro West Health Survey, which we take part in every, every year. They'll be becoming familiar with the structure of nonprofit organizations and gaining an initial understanding of the function of... and gaining an initial understanding of the function of foundations. It's kind of a complicated subject, so we just sort of skim some of that. But they have a basic understanding of how foundations work. We've already started talking about how to plan a program budget. And we've been starting to speak the budget language. Not going to stick around for that today, but we are, we are working on it. And they are learning how to research and evaluate potential grantees and what that means. That will include, we're starting our research piece tomorrow, at our meeting tomorrow. They'll be doing the research. And then we will narrow it down to four organizations that they will go and do site visits and then actually visit and evaluate them in that manner as well. They will be practicing their presentation skills throughout the program. And this is going to culminate in a prepared defense of their grant-making decisions. So that will be a formal piece towards the end of our program, where they all have to present their reasons for supporting the grants that they select. And then we'll have our graduation in May. So we're very excited about it. As I said, we're just, we've gotten through some of the background stuff. We're just starting the research piece tomorrow. We'll be working on that through January. And then we start our site visits. So to be continued. We'll let you know how it goes. I think, looking forward, we would like to see some of our current Trotter students share this information with the incoming eighth graders so that we can, so we can determine interest and get folks on board before the fall. This year, you know, it was just the start, so we were a little slow-going in, in starting up. But I think that to start talking about the program in the spring and making some decisions then will get us up and running a little bit sooner. So we're excited about it. Any questions?
I'm just curious, so it's a, where does the ten thousand dollars come from?
So that comes from the, the Southborough Community Fund. It's town money.
Yeah.
And, and then it is, the Foundation for Metro West sort of manages that. And that'll be divided into two five thousand dollar grants. So, and they do this with all those towns that were listed. It's, each town contributes from some sort of town fund.
Okay.
And that's where the Youth and Philanthropy money comes from.
So this is a new program?
New program for Southborough.
For Southborough. And you need to get some kind of consensus, kind of boil this down to two grants. Anticipate that's a challenging process?
Well, I think that part of what we're doing is we're learning how to work as a group. The students are learning how to work in a group, what consensus building is, decision-making process. So I think, I mean, this is a proven program that, that the foundation has set up. And so we will just go through and, and follow the steps and see where it leads us. But I think the, the students know that the end result is that there'll be two grants, two organizations selected. And that's kind of why we, we call it down to just four site visits. So we go from maybe, you know, possibility of maybe thirteen different programs to start with. And then they decide which ones they want to actually research. Then from there, they, as a group, decide which four they want to visit, knowing that out of those four, they're going to have to agree on two.
So the challenge of selection may be one of the more important things that they're learning.
Yeah.
And we'll also lean on the experience of the foundation, you know, and they've, have gone through their, they've, they've indicated that kids typically, and I'm not going to share what type of program that they typically choose, but they typically award money to a particular foundation over others, you know, historically speaking. But we'll lean on their guidance to hopefully broaden their scope a little bit and give them suggestions to hopefully whittle down the selection process as well. Yes?
So the grant defense presentation, are each, each student, is each student preparing what, like the one that they want to, they think the money should go to, or the?
Yes. So what will happen is after the four site visits, then we talk, we'll have a session on, they'll do the reflections on the visits. We'll talk about decision-making and consensus building. And then of those four that we've visited, then they will each go around, we'll, we'll have time that they'll each go around and make a presentation on which grant they feel strongly about and why. And then we'll have, after those presentations, then we'll have more discussion, consensus building, and make our decision.
How many participants again?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah. So it's a nice-sized group because it's not too big. Because this is, this is a, a challenge in terms of the awards, but it's also eighth graders. And we're asking them, eighth graders from two different schools. And we're asking them to come together and get to know each other and make some tough choices and have these conversations. So I think the number being, you know, a little bit on the small side, but I think for them, it's enough.
And I think it's great that we don't really have a lot of opportunities to work with Fay. And so this has been a great opportunity for us. And hopefully it's something we can continue in the future. And hopefully come May, we can bring some students here and they can share the organizations they gave the grants out to. And you can ask them some further questions. So we're excited about the, the opportunities for the year.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to have the Fay kids in the building. Yeah.
Is there a maximum number of kids you could have in the program, do you think?
I, yeah, I think.
I think twenty was where typically is where they, they, they cut it off at.
Yeah. Although I believe that leans more towards the high school groups.
Sure.
The high school groups are, are a bit more involved. So this is really modified for a middle school level.
I mean, the high school, I mean, they, they can drive to the sites. They have a little bit more independence and a little bit more freedom. I think they could do some more research on their own. You know, Joan has to, you know, work with the groups and do a lot of coordination with, with our students, so.
Still, it seems like an ambitious program for, for eighth grade, which is great.
Yes. Well, and these students are very serious about it. They're, they, they knew what they were signing up for, if you will, and they're taking it very seriously.
Good.
So I'm just fascinated by this because I feel like this is such great, real-life skills that they're getting at such an early age, I mean, the idea that they have to work together and negotiate and they're learning about nonprofits. Like, I work with nonprofits, so I have a soft spot for nonprofits, so this is great. But do you think about doing this in the high school, too?
I believe it's.
Like, the high school, would you be interested in that?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't know if it's still operating at the high school. But, you know, Mrs. Holmes, you know, children went to Algonquin, so that's where they were exposed to it. Whether, you know, it's faded or they have, or it's up and running, I don't know.
I don't think that, right now, there's a program at the high school. As a possibility.
It's not there? No? Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that that, that is on the table for discussion. I think that, I don't want to speak for the foundation, but I certainly think that that, that would be something that would be of interest. And the other thing is, once a student participates, they do have other opportunities. The foundation offers other opportunities in youth and philanthropy for them to continue. So if there's a high school program, they may choose to continue in a high school program. They have a summer program. They also have a student-run Board of Advisors for the Youth and Philanthropy Program. And so some students will have an experience like this and then continue on as board members.
And how are you, how do you select the kids? Did you, I feel like I saw information about it at the beginning of the school year, maybe?
So it was eighth grade only.
Yeah.
They did have, there was an online application through the foundation.
Yep.
They had to, I think, simply express why they would be interested in, in the, in the program. There were no, there were no, you know, teacher recommendations. And the foundation chose the students. So we're excited about it.
Is there a long-term commitment in terms of the amount of, you know, sort of capital investment money that the community fund is providing? Is that, you know, the kids are going to start, the students will start developing an interest and sort of a passion, as you, you said, Joan, for this type of meaningful work? So this is a ten thousand dollar award this year, two grants. Is there a projection forward? Because once we get, you know, obviously, the interest of our student population built and invested, it's an investment in their time and their, you know, pathway of interest, right?
Right.
How does that work?
So my understanding from the foundation is that, that they, they look at towns that don't want to do just a one-time commitment, that wish to continue.
That's great.
Because as you said, once they've generated the interest and enthusiasm, they want to be able to keep that going.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's a great group. We'll be excited to let you know how it goes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to approval of grants, donations.
Yes, we're fortunate to receive another generous donation from Bose Corporation, coming our way via the, the work of our parent community. And both who work for Bose and oftentimes live in Southborough. So Steve can speak more specifically to this particular donation.
So, so it'd be for two ceiling-mounted speakers in our library space, as well as an amplifier. This would be a permanent sound solution in the library. Currently, we're using, when we have a presentation or if we want to project or present anything, we're using desktop computer speakers that we have to drag around, plug in, and then attach to your computer. It's not the best sound quality, especially for that, the space. We've redesigned our library space this past year. And it really makes for a nice, open area for presenting, whether it be principal coffees or parent information, or even just for classroom use with students. So we're, we're very excited about the location of the ceiling-mounted speakers and amplifier. The installation and wiring will all be taken care of through our technology department, but also installation with ProAV. We had already scheduled to have a, a large screen, a flat-screen TV put in the library in place of a projection system. Really because the projection system, we would need to upgrade it quite a bit to have the strength projector that we would need for that space, especially considering how bright it is. So it was determined that a, a large TV would be a better, better piece of equipment for that space. So all this installation would be taking place together at one time.
Do we need a vote to approve?
A vote to accept the donation.
Here are motions.
I'll move that we accept a Bose donation of the speakers and amplifier for the Woodward Library, approximately valued at two thousand four hundred dollars.
Second?
Moved by Rogers, second by Katura. Any discussion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Bose.
Thank you.
And whatever parent was involved. And that brings us to all business, which is none at this time. Superintendent's report to the committee, beginning with enrollments.
Both the FY nineteen current enrollments and our FY twenty projections are in your packet. At this point in time, it's equally important to look at where we are and also where we're headed for next year. These projections are, remain consistent with our staffing projections, which are reflected in the approved budget. And again, kindergarten registration continues as it always does through the summer. So we're looking forward to final enrollment numbers in that area in August. Also in your packet is the FY nineteen expenditure report. We're about halfway through the year. And as always, we're being very watchful over where we are in terms of our FY nineteen expenditures. And I would request a vote to approve until audited.
I move we approve the FY two thousand nineteen Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of December three first, until audited.
Okay.
Moved by Rogers, seconded by Jennifer. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
For distribution and reflection purposes only, the budget priorities for FY twenty are also included in the packet this evening. And again, very important to reflect upon these as we're engaged in our FY twenty budget conversations. And certainly will be referring to these as we approach town meeting and consider our presentation at town meeting. I think this year's budget really does address each bullet that we have identified as a priority. So we're pleased again to be consistent with our, our budget priorities, with our budgeting for next year. Also, in the packet is a calendar, which somewhat remains in flux. In recent conversations with the town administrator, there has been no date yet certain for our presentation to financial advisory. We had thought at some point that we were looking at a first week in January presentation, and that has slipped somewhat, given recent changes on the advisory. And so no date yet, but we'll be ready to present when we, we have that date. The, but the, our budget, our approved budget, our numbers are well-known by the town administrator. And we, at this point, are continuing to collaborate, but feel confident about our budget moving forward as approved. Also, therein lies our public hearing, proposed date of February thirteenth. So it's hopeful we'll be before advisory, before that public hearing date. But if not, we've, we've gone after that before, after the public hearing. But again, we, we seem to be in a good place with our budget.
Yep.
So no, no real hint at all as to whether we're going to do this this month or not at this point?
At this point, it will be sometime between now and town meeting. I did request, though, that it's not, it's, I don't have the PowerPoint ready, so I probably would need more than a day's notice. So I know it's not tomorrow because there was a commitment that they would tell me at least a day before. So that's good news. Some great news with respect to the capital plan. We think it's great news, even though it's actually going to be a lot of work. So Jim Jolker, our interim business manager, is going to, works as a tag team on this presentation. When we reconvene the solar team and also at the same time of reviewing our FY twenty capital plan, we realized two things. One, that we wanted to release the new request or proposal for so, consideration of solar roof mounts and any kind of carport mounting, or can't believe is in the lot. And combine a conversation or include in that RFP some language that would potentially allow bidders to also improve our roofs at, at certain sites. We also, with good worker Brian Fantoni, have gained a greater appreciation for what that cost factor might be, particularly on the nearie roof and on the Finn roof with upgrades. As I think we've talked about every year for eight years, repairs and patching to the Trotter roof. At that time, we also indicated that we were going to be very watchful over any release of funding through MSBA, Massachusetts School Business Association Agency. And in fact, on sometime around the end of December, we received an email that invited school districts, because that's what they do. They invite us to prepare a statement of interest. And that statement of interest really broke into two categories. One, an accelerated repair program, otherwise known as ARP. And the ARP, the ARP language would consider statements of interest to repair and replace roofs, windows and doors, and/or boilers. And we have a combination of all of that. And that statement of interest would be submitted by February fifteenth. Additionally, there is a core program, which we would not necessarily fall under at this point. It would be for renovations, addition renovations, things of that sort. We're fortunate that Jim has had quite a bit of experience with the ARPs and maybe the Cores at the same time over the years. And the caveat is that regardless of which we might choose or what we might choose to submit a statement of interest in the area, the town has to agree to, within two years, provide the funding for this project. So had a preliminary conversation with the town administrator. We know from our capital plan that the boiler at Finn is estimated to be about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which might be manageable by the town. But we also know that our roofs are about a one-point-four to one-point-six million dollar renovation, repair. And so that's a very different conversation. But the position at this point in time is that we would want to consider, as a school committee, voting to support a statement of interest on one or more of these projects. committee, um, voting to support a statement of interest on one or more of these projects. And that would really require a full-out engagement, I think, with the town in terms of what would they realistically be able to fund. Um, Jim can better describe the process. We're not requesting a vote this evening because we still have time to take that vote at our next school committee meeting, once we've had an opportunity to have more in-depth dialogue with the town about the feasibility of supporting or presenting a statement of interest on any one or some combination of, um, of projects. But, um, we would definitely want to submit a statement of interest, at least with the boiler project at Finn, a manageable amount of, of funding. Um, so we'll be looking for a vote, once more information is obtained and shared with the committee at the February meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to Jim, who can give more specifics about the process and what's required. That's sort of an overview.
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, the, the process is pretty succinct and this is why we wanted to take a few minutes this evening to just go over it with you. Um, typically, a lot of you may not know, but 1% of our sales tax in Massachusetts is dedicated to MSBA for these type of projects. So every time you buy something, you know that you're helping out your local schools. Um, the, uh, qualifying age requirements, um, for the projects over the last couple of years and will be for, um, 2019, um, it's 30 years for windows and doors, uh, 20 years for roofs and boilers. So, uh, in preliminary discussion with Brian, uh, right now, we are within the threshold for, uh, roofs and, and boilers, so we feel that we can move forward if the town would like to entertain a statement of interest. The succinct part of it is, as, um, the superintendent has already cited, is that we need a vote from the school committee, uh, to ultimately authorize the superintendent to submit the statement of interest, but we also need a vote from the Board of Selectmen to, um, authorize the superintendent to submit the statement of interest. So this is where we're going to have to have, uh, more coordination with the town administrator because ultimately, um, the vote is very succinct, uh, really precise wording, which we will put that together, uh, for both the Board of Selectmen and the, uh, school committee, uh, but it cites the specific projects that we would be working on. So we're going to have to coordinate that with the town, figure out what we can and cannot do. Uh, but if you really think about it, if you hypothetically got 50% reimbursement on one of these projects, that's really good payback for your money. So, um, those are the type of things that we're going to have to impress upon the, uh, town administrator. We understand that there are a number of other priorities in the town of South Grove already and a number of, uh, conversations that are going on, uh, but we just want to be proactive and show our due diligence as school administrators to make sure that we brought this before the, um, the committee. So once the, um, if we choose to, uh, file a statement of interest, uh, it's a very, uh, precise four-phase process for, uh, MSBA. They'll review the submissions for completeness, um, they'll review the, uh, SOI submissions and accompanying documents, uh, for content. And then if they identify that, uh, there is a project that they could possibly do in South Grove, they will actually come out, um, send staff members out to do a, uh, a visit and a, and a site study, uh, on the particular projects that we would like to do. And that would be typically about a March or April ti, uh, uh, timeframe. So, uh, submissions would have to be in by February 15th. They move pretty quickly on identifying the projects, come out on site between March and April, um, and then they would recommend the SOIs for invitation, uh, and then subsequently, the town and the school committee would have to work together to identify the funding. So, uh, we've had, I have identified some projects and we have the numbers, as the superintendent has indicated, to back up the roofing projects and at least a rough number on the, uh, Finn boiler. Uh, so we'll continue to move forward and, uh, discuss those, uh, with the facilities group and then we'll meet with the town administrator again to see what we could possibly, uh, manage here in the town. And if there is something that we can move forward with, then we can move forward with the Board of Selectmen vote and with the school committee vote. And your next school committee meeting, I believe, is on the 13th. These have to be submitted electronically on the 15th, so we would have enough time for you to be able to, um, preview the projects and take that vote at your next school committee meeting, so.
It might be necessary, um, to schedule another school committee meeting, depending on what's taking place on the town side in terms of conversations and, you know, how quickly they might want to move on this because of town meeting coming up. It, I'm, I'm not anticipating it having any effect at town meeting, that we're not going forward with a warrant article or anything of that type, but I think, again, it shows, um, a concerted effort by, um, the school committee and our schools to really look for opportunities for funding to support the funding that we would be asking our taxpayers for, uh, for some very sizable projects. It's been a, a long time since we've actually had any warrant articles for any type of capital projects like this going before the town. We've been able to sort of self-sustain, um, but we do know that we've had great success with the core programs in another district. So working with MSBA, uh, it's a familiar experience and, uh, they look upon, I think, the district in general as being a favorable funding location because of the way the projects are manag, managed and the kinds of due diligence that we do. I want to, you know, really thank Brian for his sort of proactiveness because we have a lot of the information on the roofs already completed, um, in preparation for our capital plan discussion this year. I do have, um, in writing what Jim really just shared, as well as attached to this, a sample of the vote language that we would be taking for your consideration. And again, we're not looking for a vote tonight. Also, the summary of the class that we were just referring to and Trottier's here as well. When we received the roofing, uh, the roof documents back, it did talk about Trottier having different opportunities to upgrade the roof through similar kinds of activities because of the configuration of the roof. There are, you know, repairs here, repairs there, and then the overall repair of the roof. So that is here for you to consider, as well as actually the email, um, containing the language around core programs and the ARP programs from SBA to us. We did submit our letter indicating to them that we were interested in engaging in a conversation about that, so the first checkbox is already done. And, you know, I, the good news is the selectmen meet, I guess it's good news for us or for them, but they meet more often than we do, so we do have a greater window for conversations with them. Talk with Mark about the best way to do that.
So if we submit a statement of interest, is that a commitment to go ahead with the project or, or not?
No, if we submit the statement of interest, it has to be vetted by the MSBA. They approve approximately, um, I think that they are slated to, uh, look at 35 projects, um, Commonwealth-wide. So there's still an opportunity that South Grove may not be selected, but we would like to at least get the authorization to submit the SOI. If we don't get approved, then it doesn't go any further. But if we do get approved for a project, then we would be, uh, uh, once it, we get the invitation to participate, then we would have to come up with the funding. But it doesn't hurt to submit it and see if you can at least get approval.
Okay.
But that's where the town comes in, where, you know, if we do get approved, they have to be able to, um, help us identify funding, so.
And is it a fixed percentage that they would help with or?
No, I think it, um, in, uh, the projects that I did was when I was former superintendent in Lemonster and we were getting like 65% reimbursement, which was huge money for an urban, uh, district, um, but I don't know what we would experience here in South Grove, so.
They were quite careful not to commit to any percentage amounts at this point.
Yeah, that's detailed, yeah, so.
I guess, once I correct, but I, what I'm getting at, I wonder if, is there any downside to voting tonight?
There's no downside in, in submitting. Then we would have to decide from there if we do get the invitation to participate in a project, then we would have to really get serious about funding because you could always turn down the invitation. So you have, but, but to actually submit the SOI, I don't see any risk in doing that, so. It's a little bit of work involved, but we can get that done relatively quickly because, um, as the superintendent indicated, uh, Brian has quite a bit of the, uh, data available that we can, uh, do the electronic submission, so.
All right, so, um, a couple of follow-ons. Oh, one is not on. So you said there's a set aside of 1% of the sales tax.
Yep.
Is that 1% of the total amount of sales tax?
Yes, it, the Commonwealth.
Okay, okay. It's not 1% of the 7% or whatever it is, okay, it's 1% of the total.
Yeah, whatever the, the Commonwealth brings in for revenue during the course of the fiscal year, it's 1% that goes towards MSBA, another percent goes towards mass transit, et cetera, so.
Okay.
But that's how they accumulate the funding for the MSBA projects.
So when the superintendent talked about, you know, kind of a good position we were in because we have, you know, potential projects for everything, roof, windows, doors, boilers, um, can we submit multiple projects?
Yes, you could.
So you can submit as many as you want.
And you could submit multiple projects for one building. So at Finn, if we wanted to do the boiler and the roof, we could submit both, um, and on the other individual schools, we could just submit the roofs.
Okay. So, um, to Paul's point, as far as, I guess, is there any disadvantage to voting tonight? I thought you had mentioned earlier that the vote has to be on something specific.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to take the vote tonight, so we would have to craft the wording of the vote for the committee and have the committee vote on it, on that accordingly. But the only have, the, the only thing I, I guide you on is that if you do submit multiple projects, you have to figure out how you're going to finance them, so. So, you know, it, it could be some huge payback for the town because you could get some, you know, reasonable, uh, percentage of the project funded by MSBA if, if we get invited to participate, but then you have the challenge of funding those town-wide, so.
It sounds like the risk, risking that they're going to approve a whole lot of your projects, I'm not sure that's a high risk.
No, no, it may not be, but, uh, it would be nice to at least get one of them recognized, so.
From your experience, if you do submit more than one project, are they likely to approve both or just?
Yes, um, in Lemonster, I had a boiler and roof approved for one of our elementary schools. I did five projects in Lemonster under MSBA, uh, accelerated repair, so.
So, I mean, if we, if we do one of them this year, we could always do one next year, but, I mean, if, we don't have to submit a statement of interest for both in the same year?
No, you can, um, that's why we wanted to bring this up tonight, to get a little bit of guidance, um, as to what your thinking was, and then we can, uh, craft the, um, the SOI accordingly, so.
I think that's going to take some discussion with the town.
Yeah. And I think that the variability, you know, when we talked about the, the roofs, when we talked about the solar, we did mention MSBA and we had nothing specific to suggest that we knew when they were going to release the funds or how much they were going to release the funds. So I think some of the challenge might be, if we don't seize the moment, we're not really sure what MSBA is going to do next year.
No, no.
So that, that's the variableness of this process and really the importance of the, the deep dive into the conversation about what it is we actually want to move forward, but probably, and I think there's the greatest need factor, but, you know, we've, we've already spoken about or heard from the town with respect to the Neary school, when we started talking about the solar panels, the Neary roof is about a 1.6 amount on the project for the roof. So I think that's, that invites in a whole other conversation that started not here, but elsewhere at the town level in terms of long-term, what does the town want to do, you know, out, years out. So committing, uh, X amount of funds to a building that, you know, may need additional repairs, may not be the, something that is appetizing for them at this point. So that might then focus our attention to one area over another or multiple projects in one place. You know, Trottier certainly is something we've talked about every year. I think it was, you know, how much can we pat, how long can we keep patching the roof? And it seems like we've patched the same areas a couple times.
Yeah.
And so there's some cost estimates here, so, you know, again, part of a bigger conversation. Um, the good news is we don't have to have it done tomorrow and we have a little bit of time and our budget is done, so we can spend more time talking about these kinds of things, which we have not done in some time.
Yeah, I think you said, Jim, if, if the project is approved, you have two years to fund it?
Yeah, you'd have to fund it within two years, yes. So as the superintendent indicated, what we can do is, if we are, um, fortunate enough to be invited on one of the projects, we can still get a, uh, warrant on the next town meeting, uh, warrant and, um, be able to deal with the funding at that point, so.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, hopefully solar will be squared away by then too.
Yeah, we would know by then as to what the, um, outcome of the RFP is, yeah.
I think that target was March.
That was March, yeah.
Jessica, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think you said this, but I didn't write it down. Do, do we, if we get selected, do we have to participate?
No, if we, if we get invited to participate on a project, that the, uh, school committee and town could always reject it.
Okay.
If they can't come up with a, the availability of funding.
Okay. And Christine, you said that we don't know what MSBA is going to do next year. Do you mean like just we don't know how much money they're going to have for funding?
Right, or how many projects they'll fund. It's sort of a year-to-year basis. Um, I know last year, when we were doing a boiler replacement in another school, um, it was sort of, here's a month's notice, we have some additional funding. And we missed the boiler timeline by, I think, five months. It was five months, um, younger than we needed to have it at that point, but it was, you know, sort of an unanticipated or expected release of additional funds. So there's some variability in terms of, um, when S, MSBA releases funds, how many, much funding is available, how many projects they'll fund from year to year. And there have been some years where they haven't released any funds for, you know, any funding for these projects.
It's been pretty consistent since, uh, 2012 where they, um, uh, they, it ranges from 35 to 50 projects, depending upon the size of the projects, but, um, and I have to say that before, years ago, they would never fund any of these type of projects. So for the last five years or so, it's been pretty consistent, so. That's why it's, um, advantageous to take, take advantage of it if you, um, can come up with the funding, so.
Is 50 million a lot or, or no? Is 50 million a lot, you know, historically?
Yeah, um, uh, you have to, as the superintendent indicated, though, the projects tend to, to run, uh, close to a million and a half to 2 million, depending upon, especially if you're doing roofs. So that can add up quickly across the Commonwealth, so. And you know, from your own experience as a school committee member, the condition of schools in Massachusetts, they're not necessarily all in the, in the best of shape, so, um, a lot of school districts do benefit from this, so.
I just had one comment about if you are fortunate enough to have your project accepted and you decline, you get back in the queue, so you start over again. So there, I think that is a risk if, you know, if you're committed and your project is accepted, um, it's important to make sure that you move forward.
Yeah, and they'll pay attention to, to the next round, so.
Yeah, yes, back to the pack.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Right.
All right.
So we'll be working with the town administrator on, on this as well.
Good.
And also enclosed is the FY twenty budget, approved budget.
Okay. Educational policy, we have none apparently, same with policy development and distribution. We do have a personnel report. Communication, none at this time, brings us to action on minutes from, uh, last meeting of December 12th, 2018. We need a vote to accept these.
Since I was not there, do I just abstain?
Technically, you can vote to approve.
It's your choice.
Okay.
Or you can abstain, it's up to you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, uh, move to accept the South Grove School Committee open meeting minutes from Wednesday, December 12th, 2018.
Second. Okay. Motion by Katura, seconded by Roger. Any comments, questions? All in favor? unanimous? Those are some payrolls, I'm sure we have.
Here.
Agenda items for next month. Agenda items for next month. Got the public hearing, SEF presentation, preschool presentation, red cats. I'm dying to find out about red cats.
Not related to the ice cats.
And a canvassite update.
Not all in one. We're queuing them up, just like the MSBA projects.
Okay.
So, this is from now till, you know, May, and we hope to keep adding to it. It's nice to have something new on the presentation. One of the benefits of having some of the budget discussions out of the way early on.
Well, there'll be more discussion on the.
On the MSBA.
On the MSBA.
Uh huh.
Yep.
And solar, at some point, hopefully.
All right. Brings us to audience sharing once again. Does anyone have anything to share? If not, we'll entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Second?
Moved by Jessica, seconded by Katara. All in favor? And we are adjourned.